Good evening. Before we begin our meeting this evening, Lindsay Matherne, a senior student at Hanville High School, would like to offer a moment of reflection, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Jay Robichaud. Please stand.
Hello, my name is Lindsay. I just want to take this time to thank God for today and every day, and I want to think that after this meeting, He keeps every one of us safe on their way home. Amen.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you very much, Lindsay, for that moment of reflection, and best wishes to you during your senior year at Hanville. Hope that this year is your best year ever. This meeting of the Board of St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, August 22nd, 2018, is called to order. Good evening and welcome. Madam Secretary, please note for the record that all Board members are in attendance. Also in attendance this evening is Superintendent Felicia Gomez-Walker, along with the Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent Mrs. Shelley Babino. First item on the agenda is item 2.01, which is approval of the July 16th, 2018 Committee Meeting and July 18th, 2018 Board Meeting. Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 2.02, Personnel Items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 20th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the personnel items as presented to the Board tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savwa, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. All eight members voting in favor. Item 2.03, Renewal of Medicare Advantage Plan from Humana. On September 1st, 2008, the Board first offered retirees with Medicare the option of continuing traditional Medicare or converting to a private fee-for-service plan offered by Humana. Currently, 502 out of 682 eligible retirees have chosen to switch to the Medicare Advantage Plan. This is an increase of 9.3% from the prior year. Humana submitted a renewal for January 1st, 2019, that continues existing coverage at a 6.5% decrease. By offering the Medicare Advantage Plan, the district gives retirees an alternative to traditional Medicare while decreasing the district's cost for health insurance. Based on the savings reported in 2017, the district estimates a $1.2 million savings. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 20th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the renewal of the Medicare Advantage Plan from Humana at an annual cost of $2,312,251.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 2.04 is renewal of flood insurance. The school board has purchased flood insurance on district-owned buildings since 2007, as required by FEMA, in order to qualify for reimbursement in the event of a declared disaster. The district has 94 flood policies, flood insurance policies, with 71 of them renewing in September. The upcoming renewal premiums and policy schedule were reviewed by the Director of Risk Management and Benefits. The remaining policies will be renewed as they become due. The district's property insurance policy also provides $10 million in excess flood and storm surge coverage. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 20th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the renewal of the flood insurance from Wright National Flood through Egan Insurance Agency.
I'll second.
At a cost of $216,329.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 2.05 is ratification of partial substantial completion of Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center. The Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center is ready to be accepted as partially substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Wednesday, August 8th, 2018, with punchless items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. Acceptance of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center will allow the owner to utilize all spaces excluding the theater for its intended use. This recommendation was discussed with the Board President, Vice President, and Capital Improvements Chairperson. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 20th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept ratification of partial substantial completion of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 2.06, Accounts Payable for the Month of July 2018. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 20th, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of July 2018 as presented in the amount of $2,942,391.98.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Okuan, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Moving on to closing items. Item 3.01, Standing Committee Reports. Any Chair of a Standing Committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday. We reviewed three items. Two items were a committee meeting only, first being the update for the Rodney, Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center. The second was ratification of partial substantial completion of the Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center, which was approved tonight. And the third item was engineering selection for Nusarpi Elementary HVAC Replacement. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian.
Mr. President, the Personnel Committee met on Monday night also, and all the personnel items were presented by Mrs. Teresa Weber at the Board, and were moved and approved at this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Savwa.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, August 20th, 2018. We had two items in our agenda, both a committee meeting only. The first was, Dr. Nicholas gave us a presentation on the St. Charles Parish Public Schools English Learners Program, and the second presentation was by Mr. Pathé regarding the University of New Orleans Instant Admit Program, which our seniors will be hearing more about this coming year.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Bernard.
Mr. President, we had a Risk Management Insurance Committee meeting. We had our monthly legal update given to us by our risk manager. We discussed renewal of the Medicare Advantage Plan and the renewal of the flood insurance, which was presented tonight and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud.
Mr. President, the Technology Committee didn't meet, but we had an impromptu message from our director, Ms. Stephanie Steib, to direct the outage of internet service that we had on Monday, and hopefully that just won't happen again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okuan. The Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, August 20th, and we covered two items. One of the two items came to the full Board during this meeting and was approved, and that was the accounts payable for the month of July 2018. The other item was that the committee briefly discuss school board property that is leased. However, the committee postponed further discussion until the school board retreat in September. That brings us to item 3.02, the Superintendent's Report. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge, introduce, and congratulate Ms. Teresa Brown, who has been selected as the Administrator of Ancillary Services. Ms. Brown will be taking Pat O'Malley's place upon his retirement in October. Congratulations, Ms. Brown.[772.51][772.51](applause) Tonight, Assistant Superintendent A.J. Pathé has prepared a presentation to the Board reporting the performance of our students on assessments used in calculating district and school performance scores. Mr. Pathé.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Gomez-Walker. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to present the student achievement data for last school year. Before I get into specifics, I want to review a quote that appeared in the New Orleans Advocate this summer. It reads as follows. "St. Charles Parish had the highest proportion of students in the New Orleans area scoring at least mastery in the 2017-18 school year, 50%. That represented three points of growth over the prior year, which was also the most of any local parish." So as you can see by just this one quote, that our students performed excellently this past school year. This chart also appeared in the article, and it further outlines exactly how we fared with the neighboring districts. And you'll notice our students in 3rd through 8th grade scored at the 50% level on mastery and above. Now, overall Louisiana statewide average was 34%. So we're much higher than that Louisiana average, along with the other districts as So let's talk a little bit more specifics about 3rd through 8th grade data. So this chart shows the percentage of students scoring basic and above. The reason I show this slide is the old standard, the previous standard, was for all students to score the basic level. However, over time, the Louisiana Department of Education has raised the standards to where mastery is now the new basic. But I wanted to illustrate the point that under the previous standard, our students did quite well. You notice in ELA and math, our numbers are 80, in the 80 percentiles, and then 70, high 70s. The one area that you see a difference is social studies. Those scores tend to be a little bit lower on this chart, and there's a simple reason for that. Two years ago, Louisiana implemented new standards for social studies. With those new standards came a more rigorous assessment. So our students have only had a couple of years to adjust to that new standard and new assessment. So over time, we're confident that those numbers will also raise, just like the ELA and math scores. One other thing with this chart, you'll notice in parentheses, I have a plus or minus with a number. That simply indicates the percentage point increase or decrease from the previous school Now, this is the new standard, mastery and above. All students are expected to perform at the mastery level, and you'll notice again that in ELA, significant growth in our students for all grade levels. In math and social studies, though, you'll notice in the middle grades, our students increased from the previous year. However, there's some dips at the elementary level. So I want to illustrate a couple of points here in 3rd grade. What you ought to remember that students, as they transition from 2nd grade to 3rd grade, they go from no testing subjects at the end of the school year to the first time they're administered a LEAP test. So there is a bit of a transition period for these students. So we want to focus on that transition, not only for 2nd to 3rd grade, but also as students transition from elementary to middle school, as well as middle school to high school. So those transition periods are very important and something we need to focus on. You'll notice in social studies, a couple of areas where the scores went down. So one of the things we're doing this upcoming year is increasing the amount of time that students have for social studies and science at the elementary grades. We recognize as the standards continue to increase and the rigor increases, we need to have more time for our students to excel. And again, those numbers, I'm confident, will grow over time as we adjust to the new standards. One thing I left out, and it was by design, is science assessments. There are no scores this year, and that's because, similar to social studies from a couple of years ago, there's new science standards in place, and there's a new science assessment. So this past year, our students, along with every other student in the state of Louisiana, participated in a field test. We don't receive results from a field test. They use that for information for the upcoming test. So we'll get scores next year, and we'll be able to see all four subject levels, but right now, that science test was only a field test. This Board has focused on equity, and our schools, our administrators and teachers have also focused on equity, because we want to make sure that we're presenting equitable opportunities for all of our students. So this chart really illustrates what we mean when we talk about equity. First of all, you'll notice when we look at all students, we're tied for 2nd in the state in terms of scoring mastery and above in 3rd through 8th grade. Quite an achievement for our students. But when you dig deeper into the data, you'll notice that African-American students are 2nd in the state as well. Economically disadvantaged students are tied for 1st in the state, and then special education students are tied for 6th. The one area that's a relative challenge for us, you'll notice, is English learners. We're 25th right now. So what we're noticing as we dig deeper into this data is that many of our students who are English learners, and that means English is a second language for them, are entering in middle and high school. So you can imagine, as you enter at a later date and you're older, you have less time to prepare for the LEAP test, and hence, they're learning the language and taking a rigorous assessment at the same time. However, our students that are entering at the elementary grades, we're noticing a faring much better on the LEAP test. So again, it stands to reason, the more time they have to learn a language, the better they're going to score on the LEAP assessments. Now we'll shift to high schools. So with 3rd through 8th grade, you notice I only talked about the LEAP test. When we get to high schools, however, there's many more tests that our students are taking, and I'll review those one by one. I'll begin with the EOC, or End-of-Course Assessment. In the past years, you would have seen six subjects with an EOC assessment. This year, you only see two. That's because the state is transitioning from the EOC courses to LEAP 2025. So very similar to taking LEAP tests at 3rd through 8th grade, that's what our high school students are going to be experiencing moving forward. However, there were two EOC assessments this past year, those being Biology and English III. Again, you notice an increase from the previous year for both of those subjects. What will happen this upcoming year is Biology will convert to LEAP 2025, and then English III, one more year will be in place for EOC. After that time, that test will disappear. The one key that you have to remember about EOC versus LEAP, EOC is based on four achievement levels. So those achievement levels are excellent, good, fair, and needs improvement, whereas LEAP is based on five achievement levels, and that's all the way from advanced to mastery, basic, approaching basic, and unsatisfactory. The other important point with the switch from EOC to LEAP is the LEAP test is much more rigorous than the old EOC assessments. There are currently five assessments that our students took for LEAP 2025. You'll notice, though, I don't have any numbers next to it in parentheses, and that's because this is baseline data for us. This is the first time our students experienced these more rigorous assessments at the high school level. So again, looking at basic and above, you'll see a high of 78 in Algebra I, and then we also at US History are at 62% basic and above. When we shift to mastery and above, you'll notice again, Algebra I tops out at 51%, and then Geometry is at 27%. But again, this is baseline data, and over time, as our students adjust to the new assessment, and our teachers adjust to the new assessment as well, we're going to continue to see increases in these scores. Another assessment that all juniors in the state of Louisiana take is the ACT test, which is a college readiness exam, and our overall composite score there is 20.2. You may wonder why there's an asterisk, because we still have yet to receive our official data for this year. So this is based on the 2016-17 school year. Some more assessments. Advanced Placement. So many of our students elect to take advanced placement courses. So these are rigorous courses that are college-like at the high school level. They also will be administered an AP exam at the end of that course. And the reason why that's important is if students score high enough, and specifically being a 3, 4, or 5 on an AP exam, they'll earn college credit while still at the high school level. And that saves their parents money if they go to a college in Louisiana or some other colleges that accept an AP course. There's two important numbers here. The first one is the percentage of AP tests taken with a score of 3 or higher, and again, the 3 or higher is important because of college credit. And the other number is the percentage of total students with a score of 3 or higher. And you'll notice in both cases, we're in the 40s, and in both cases, we've increased from the previous school year. So not only are our students taking more rigorous coursework, but they're successful on this rigorous coursework and receiving college credit at the same time. To give you further information on AP, we've had approximately 579 students take an AP course and an AP exam last year, and that equated to about 970 AP exams. So that means many of our students are taking more than one AP course and an AP exam. Another important data point for our high schools is the high school graduation credential data. This is important because when we think of high school diplomas, we may think of a standard diploma. But what's happened over time is students are able to strengthen their diploma, and they can do that by earning a basic or an advanced credential. And there's some examples of doing that that I'll share, one of them being back to AP. So a student can elect to take an AP course, and if he passes that course, instead of getting a standard diploma, he'll get a basic credential on top of that diploma. Let's say that same student now takes the AP course and receives a 3, 4, or a 5 on the exam, then that student will earn an advanced credential on their standard diploma. It's great to see that our numbers continue to increase. Right now, we're at 54.6% of our students earning either a basic or an advanced credential on top of their diploma. You'll notice that's a 7.4 percentage point increase from the previous year. We ultimately want all of our students to earn an advanced credential on their diploma. As far as just earning a diploma, which is also great because they graduated from high school, that number is 26.8 for this past school year. And then our graduation cohort overall is 81.6%. So what happens to our students when they finish high school? Well, 66% of them enter college in that fall after their graduation date. And out of those 66%, 27% attend a two-year college, and 73% attend a four-year college. So again, great information, and it shows that our students are continuing their education in two- or four-year colleges. So all of that information presented to you shows that our students are excelling, and our teachers and our schools are excelling. But we always want to focus on continuous improvement. So here's the things that we're going to do. First and foremost is implementing Tier 1 high-quality curriculum in every content area, from kindergarten all the way to high school. That has to be a priority for us, and we're there this school year. Another thing we're going to focus on is our assessment culture and our assessment practices. We want to ensure that when students take formative assessments and teachers are analyzing that data, they're using that data to support our students. But that support extends to our teachers as well. One of the areas we've really focused on is professional learning for all, and all means all. So this summer, I can proudly say that we offered professional learning for every single teacher that wanted to come onboard and continue to develop professionally. And I'm proud to say again that many of our teachers took advantage of that, including brand-new teachers that we have just hired. Another thing I want to continue to focus on is technology for our students, because we want to give them all the advantages possible. And one example of that is the Chromebook Project. About three years ago, we started that, the middle school, and all middle school students have access to Chromebooks in their core classes. But that's extended beyond that to 5th and 4th grade this past year, and this year, we're hoping to do that in 3rd grade. That also extends all the way to high school, so high school students are being able to take advantage of this as well. One other area, we mentioned that 66% of our students choose to go to college, but there's a good percentage that want to choose careers right after high school. So we want to make sure we're strengthening our career and technical education courses to give them all the opportunities they deserve as well. And then finally, we talk a lot about academics, and this presentation is really focused on academics, but we know we are a AAA school district, because not only do we focus on academics, but we focus on athletics and the arts. And I want to thank the Board for their support in implementing this for our teachers and students, and you see the payoff is tremendous, because our students are benefiting from that. And it really is a team effort with the Board, our administration, our teachers, and then ultimately, our parents and students. So again, thank you for this opportunity to present this information, and with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
I have one question, A.J. First of all, let me congratulate you on this report. It's an excellent report and some very valuable information. Just for a point of clarification, though, you indicated that a strategy that the district will employ to address the increase in rigor of courses and the number of students who are falling behind in those areas would be to increase time on task for those youngsters. I'm curious to know where will that time come from, given the constraints that the state places on school districts in terms of time requirements and classes and so forth. Secondly, you indicated that 56% of the youngsters in our district go on to college. What happens to the other 44% of those youngsters? Are we tracking those 44 to find out what they're doing after graduation? Are they going directly into the workforce? Just where are they going? Are we tracking them at this point?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your questions. The first question to address the time on task, and specifically in social studies and science at the elementary grades, what was happening is we devoted a lot of time to ELA instruction, English Language Arts, because if a student can read, that's going to help him to succeed in social studies and science. But as the rigor continues to increase, we realize content knowledge is just as important. So what we've done with ELA is combined reading and writing into an ELA block, and we were able to take some of that time and devote it to science and social studies. In terms of where the students are going, so many of them are going directly into the workforce. And we've had several programs this past year with business and industry where they've come in and taught our students. For example, with Apache, the scaffolding, they're getting training at the high school level, and many of them are saying that once you graduate, you can come join us in the workforce. We've also done that with electrical. ABC has come in and done that with us as well. So as many opportunities we can take advantage of, of business and industry, and they really want to work with us, we're trying to do that. In terms of a direct number, I can't say for sure exactly what that number is. We haven't been tracking it, but we know, just based on our current experience, that students are entering the workforce.
A.J., a few years ago, we had a program. It's called Job Shattering. Much of that going on now with the two high schools, the different businesses and industries? I know some of it because of insurance, they can't do it, but those that can.
Yes, sir. We still have that. So students now can elect to graduate in the Top Opportunity Diploma pathway, or they can choose the Jump Start pathway, which is more of that career exploration. And what's happening is, as part of Jump Start, students are taking industry-based certifications. And then part of that, they are also engaging in externships or internships. So where the age requirement is not an issue, we're trying to take advantage of that, but that does sometimes limit us. But internships may also be an option. But as much as we can do that- But as much as we can do that, we are still doing that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Pethe, thank you. Very good report, and appreciate the questions, follow-up questions for the board. I'd like to point out, throughout Mr. Pethe's report, he talked about new assessments, new, more rigorous standards, and also, there will be a new formula for assigning letter grades to school throughout Louisiana. So, with all of the changes that have been dictated by the state, it is certainly a challenge for school districts to keep up with these changes, and also to look at trend data to really get an accurate idea of how our students are progressing over the years. But we are up for that challenge, and so are our students, obviously. So, while the state is not prepared to assign letter grades to districts at this time, I think they are scheduled to be released in the late fall, we are proud to share something with our public. The St. Charles Parish Public Schools has been recognized as a 2018 Best Schools in America by the website Niche. This school system is ranked as the number-one school district in Louisiana. This was achieved by scoring highly on a variety of factors. It includes test scores, and we valued performance on test scores, but it also looks at student-teacher ratios and reviews from students and parents. It is appreciated when these efforts are noticed by others and that our school system can be acknowledged for its commitment to providing a well-rounded, world-class education for all of the students in St. Charles Parish. As we continue to celebrate our accomplishments of the students who represent this AAA school system, I'd like to acknowledge that Honville High School ROTC and the RJVL Elementary Schools Choir were honored to participate in the National PTA Conference held this summer in New Orleans. The Honville High School ROTC presented and retired the colors at the conference, and the RJVL Choir sang during the opening ceremony. Let's take a quick look at the RJVL Choir singing one of their selections for the participants at the conference. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the RJVL Elementary School Choir from Parity, Louisiana. What a performance! Can't wait to see them at the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center.
I might add, Superintendent, that they're also invited to sing the National Anthem at the National PTA Conference.
Great, great. What a great opportunity for our students. We're going to now move on to athletics. The 2018 high school football season kicks off this week with our high school jamborees. On tomorrow, Thursday, August 23rd, the Honville Tigers will host the Jesuit Blue Jays. And on Friday, August 24th, the Fighting Wildcats will travel to play the Lucha Bulldogs. The middle school football jamboree will be held at Destrehan High School on Thursday, September 13th. Games will begin at 5:00 p.m., and all four middle schools will play in this jamboree. For updated details about athletics, please access the school's website. This is a reminder that St. Charles Parish Public Schools has a bag protocol for football games. Fans can carry see-through bags of any size, non-see-through bags that are no larger than 8.5 by 11. That's about the same size as a sheet of paper. And they can also carry small clutch bags with or without a handle or strap. Please share this information with friends and family as a reminder, and again, this bag protocol will be in effect for the football jamborees and football games. The complete bag protocol and frequently asked questions are available on our website. Also, another reminder that tobacco and tobacco products are strictly prohibited on school grounds, as stipulated in policy and state law. We appreciate your cooperation. St. Charles Parish Public Schools will host a ribbon-cutting ceremony and community open house on Saturday, this Saturday, August 25th, for the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center. The event will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the ribbon-cutting ceremony will take place from 6:00 to 6:30. Center tours will be provided after the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and spaces in the education wing and center will come alive with student performances throughout the evening. All are invited to attend this community event and experience the new state-of-the-art center. I hope to see you there. The beginning of the 2018-2019 school year is off to a great start. The Public Information Department was able to capture some special moments from the first day of school. Let's take a look at this year's video.
This school year focuses on the process, because success is the sum of small efforts repeated day in and day out.
I'd like to tell the students to set goals, and I'm hopeful that you can exceed those goals beyond your wildest expectations. Have a wonderful school year.
A mind is like a parachute. It doesn't work if it isn't open. So, let's all open our minds to the many possibilities before us this school year. Don't stop till you're proud. Wishing everyone a fantastic school year ahead, and remember to be kind to one another.
Welcome back to an exciting new school year. I'm looking for this school year to have a productive year in our AAA school district, the academics, athletics, and the arts. Looking forward to a fantastic school year.
We're looking for a very productive and successful school year for each one of you. We have staff, support people here to help you and support you. We have leadership in the school district who is very committed to your success. So, don't be afraid to reach out. Be the best that you can be.
Who cannot be proud and excited about our Performing Arts Center? We're excited about putting the educational portion of that building in service this year and offering all of the facets of art to all of our students. So, looking forward to a great school year.
It is my hope for our students that, at the end of this school year, they will be able to reflect and say that this year was their most rewarding and fulfilling year that they have ever experienced.
Welcome to a new school year. We're excited to get back to our core business of teaching and learning. As we start the 2018-2019 school year, we will continue to provide high-quality educational opportunities for all students in our AAA school district, focused on academics, athletics, and the arts. This year promises to be a great year. We are building upon the successes of the previous school year as we focus on our future. Together, you and I, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The best is yet to come!
Thank you to the Public Information Department for capturing those first days of school. The excitement and enthusiasm and engagement of our students and our teachers are definitely obvious in that video. Our current student count is 9,698 students. This is 647 students more than the count last year. Everyone in the school system is focused on our core business of teaching and learning, and we have all the ingredients for a highly successful school year. Tremendous leadership from the board, dedicated, hard-working administrators, teachers, and staff, and supportive parents, families, and community members. This will surely be the best year yet. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Very informative report. Entertained or adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.